I have five fifteen. I shall call this meeting order. To order, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We shall have roll call, please, Ashley.
Councilmember Crows, Solvi.
Yes.
Miller, Collexon.
Yes.
Mayor Waller's.
Yes. All right, we'll just start out with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. This one is actually by Zig Ziglar. Research indicates that workers have three primary needs. Interesting work, recognition for doing a good job, and being let in on things that are going on in the company. So I'd like to take this opportunity to just give recognition to our city crew for the, you know, recent efforts in cleaning up after the storm. I think everybody did a phenomenal job. And really that includes a shout out to really everybody in the community. We had from utility companies to all the tree trimming people. We had a real mess out at the park. I drove through there last night and it looks, it looks amazing, you know, you'd never really know outside of the few piles of trees and stuff. So I just wanted to give some credit out there and recognition to the people for doing a good job on that end, so. All right, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. If anybody has anything they would like to add or.
I'll move approval of the agenda as stated.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Carry. Citizens comments, if we have anybody that would like to approach the council, now would be a good time. Doesn't appear that we do. We have no public hearings. We will move on to the July twenty fifth regular meeting minutes. Reading and approval of those minutes, I guess.
I will move approval of the July twenty fifth regular meeting minutes.
I will second that. All those in favor of the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now we move on to the condensed version from July twenty fifth.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes on July twenty fifth.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of the July twenty fifth regular or condensed meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We will move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, transit report, gambling report, exempt permit for the assumption of the Blessed Virgin Mary, pay estimate number one, airport taxiway reconstruction and crack seal project. And I guess I can move approval of the items on the consent agenda and.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda?
I have none.
None here? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the items on the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Carry. Okay, we will move on to petitions, requests, and communications. We have a request from the Family Dollar for a liquor license for twenty twenty-three. I guess we can, looking for a motion and a second, and then we can have some discussion on that license.
Well, we just asked before we do that, are we, is this something that we've allowed in the past? I mean, have we allowed, is it just three two or is it, we have allowed three two?
Well, it's three two, but not, I mean, we've had three two like when Pumita was here.
I don't know if we've got any other retailers, and that was gonna be my question too, Brian, if we've ever permitted any retailers for that matter. And if we do, I guess my concern is we have, obviously we have a municipal and I know it may not be a direct, well, in a sense it'd be, we'd be competing with ourselves and, but I guess just throw it out for more discussion and get your more thoughts on it.
Well, I mean, I, I believe it's just three two and nothing else. I mean, there's, you know, you don't have hard liquor, you don't have wine, you don't have anything other than just three two.
You know, are we?
Would that, that would like include like the, what do you call it, not the Bacardi drinks, but the wine spitters or whatever. I know Pumita used to sell it.
Okay. I believe it, I think it just goes back to the other grocery store in town years ago that wanted to have it. And I think we denied that, but I think they wanted a full license to do everything.
Well, and I think we've had other requests too. At one time it seems to me Willie's, I thought even requested to have, you know, be able to sell, you know, three two also and I'm just not sure there's really, I mean, you like to work with a local business, I understand that part, but I'm just not sure if we're opening ourselves up to a, you know, if we approve this one and then pretty soon everybody in town. Jay?
Yeah, Coburn's requested it one time, Dale's Tip Top Tap requested it one time, Willie's requested it one time. There have been quite a few requests in my experience and it's always been denied because of competition factor.
But was it only three two? Cause I know that Coburn's, Coburn's wanted everything because that's, their stores everywhere else had it, everywhere they had it.
Sort of the Tip Top Tap thing.
Yeah, they wanted a full.
Full like liquor store.
Yeah, right. And I, I, I know that's why that was denied and this only being three two.
Well, I look at it as these guys are open Sundays, which may, I mean, I don't know if that plays into a factor, but it's like, I, I don't know. Is it something that you could look at and see if it's detrimental to the liquor store having, it's only for a year? Or you just not even wanna get into it?
What do you think about the aspect of what kind of precedents we're gonna set? I mean, you think we're gonna have more requests if we approve this one? And I guess my thought is we probably, we are, and I guess that's kinda the way I'm looking at this, is maybe not so much for this particular application as much as, you know, what we're gonna be opening ourselves up to going forward. And I think that's maybe what we need to probably have a discussion about.
I mean, the license is strictly for three two.
Oh, no.
That's it.
I get where it's important to have our own municipal, cause we have a municipal and the competition part of it, but the other thing is like it's three two, somebody can drive twenty miles down to the liquor store there too if they were really that intent on buying something different. I don't know, I don't foresee it as a big competition, but, and I get what you're saying about precedents, but we're not obligated as to approve anything based on precedents from what I understand, or maybe not.
Yeah, and I think, you know, at the end of the day, it's probably not gonna put a real big dent in our sales at the, at the municipal, you know, but I think the citizens of Morse, at least some realize, you know, we use a lot of that revenue we make from the municipal to fund a lot of different projects in this city, so I think we ought, gotta keep that in mind too. Yeah, I don't know, it's.
Well, maybe something we look at when everybody's here for more discussion too.
You know, I'm almost inclined to agree.
I'm inclined to table it to our next meeting for a full, I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say about it. And maybe, you know, Jeff being on the, council member Miller being on the council longer, then a lot of us would maybe have a little more insight to a couple of things in the past there. So I'm not inclined not to say I'm gonna accept it, but I, I think it would be better for us to at least think about it a little bit more before we get into it.
Yeah, I think what we did last time, if we call that, we declined indefinite and that's, we just basically started denying it or tabling it to everyone awarded, I guess. I'm thinking of where the way to word it would be for Ashley, so just table it till next meeting when we have full council. City manager Shrupp will be back and I'd be interested to get her take on it as well.
I mean, since, since it is in front of us, I think that, you know, I would make a motion to table this until our next regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting. Since we, we're, nobody, nobody made a motion or seconded it. That would be what, August?
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'll second that. All right, we have a, we have a motion and a second to table the twenty twenty-three liquor license, liquor license application for Family Dollar. We'll just have roll call on that vote, please.
Councilmember Crows, Solvi.
Yes.
Miller, Collexon.
Yes.
Mayor Waller's.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the ordinances and resolutions. We have an ordinance, we have a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract for the twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three street improvement.
I just had one question about this. From what I understand, it's obviously, it says it's a mill and an overlay. All right? And then down in the wording, where, where it says it'd be resolved by the city council of the city of Morse, that the bid for the twenty twenty-three street improvements waterline project be in it hereby accepted. So I mean, I, I'm not really sure what that, it's a different terminology to that. I mean, I don't, I don't believe there's anything in, in the bid or anything in the description here or discussion of whether they're gonna be doing anything with it, shouldn't be any waterline.
There would be a bid item that said waterline and stuff like.
Well, that's what I would assume that also, so I think maybe it's just.
I think that's just the typo.
Must be a misprint from something else.
Maybe.
Russ stated that there's no utilities.
Okay.
Under that area.
Okay.
So we'd probably wanna take that out though.
Yeah, we'll have to, if we do decide to approve it, we can approve it with that correction in mind. That it's for a mill and overlay, not improvements for waterline. I mean, it looks like the bid came in decent enough.
Yeah, that, that, we definitely need to do something there. Well, I'll move approval of the resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract for the twenty twenty-three street improvements with the correction in the wording here to just say street improvements, not street improvements waterline project to eliminate waterline project from the root.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract for the twenty twenty-three street improvement. We'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Solvi.
Yes.
Crows, Collexon.
Yes.
Miller, Mayor Waller's.
Yes. All right, we have down to the city managers' reports and recommendations. We have no city manager newsletter this go around. So we'll move on to the board of review training. City manager Shrupp had sent us all some communication about the board of review and her recommendation is that we get at least one to two other members to get trained this year and another one to two next year. So Zach, I think, had sent an email to us and said he would volunteer if no one else did so, or, but he said he would do it and if we have any other volunteers, that'd be fine too.
It's easy here, there's a website to get on and you can do it right there instead of a, you know, we used to attend a class.
You don't have to attend class.
But you, you know, you know, ten years ago when I did it, it was, you had to go to a class, yeah.
When I did the last one, Brian, I did mine online and it literally took fifteen, twenty minutes.
Right.
Tops.
So I mean, if you would like to do it, I mean, I'll, I'll probably take a look at this too and try to get it done also.
Okay.
We have a couple of people that are.
Well, then we'd have our two that Becca was kinda looking for.
Mm-hmm. We only need one, but if you happen not to be here during that.
Do we need to put that in a form of a motion at all?
I, I believe that's just really information, isn't it?
Information, okay. We'll just make note of that then, that councilmember Solvi and Crows will take that board of review training. All right, good deal. Any board updates, we'll move on to the next thing on the agenda. Anybody have anything they'd like to share or bring to the council? Usually early in the month, we haven't had a chance to really sit in on too many boards yet. I have a couple yet this week, so I have nothing to report on my end.
No, only that I'm reiterating that we put in, you know, some monies for the capital impro, or the capital outlay for the RFC in our, in our budget and cause I, I believe that, I, I, there's talk that once we get that capital, we're thinking about taking it to a twenty-four hour pass and I think that's it, will be a good deal for that stuff there, so. Just keeping it on our radar so when we do our, our pre-budget.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll be getting into that in spades within the next month or so here. All right. Any other business to come before the council?
Are we meeting the twenty ninth of August? Or not, no.
Is that the?
There's five Tuesdays, that would be it.
Yep. It would be a work session.
That would be, yep. We can maybe talk about a topic at our next meeting then.
Okay.
I would say just for any additional items, just to, that I noticed that the pickleball courts aren't,
Yep.
aren't done as we were discussing it, that maybe if you would be so kind as to maybe look at, look into that a little bit or something, or, I don't know if you talked to the city manager, if she can talk to Russ or, and also find out, have we actually paid? If we haven't, then it seems like we're getting shuffled to the back and we have to apply the appropriate pressure.
Yeah, I know there's plenty of people in town that are eager to.
Well, I think when we expend that, that money for that project, it'd be nice to have it during this time of the year when people really would like to use it.
Yep.
It really doesn't do us any good to have them show up in November or October and do a, a fresh coat on everything and then we go winter on it.
Right.
I'm like, no, then you won't get it till then, or, or maybe we need to source it to a different company if they're not going to show up when they say they're going to. Obviously, I think the last meeting we had, they were supposed, every meeting we've had for, oh, they're supposed to be here next week. They're supposed to be here next week, well, obviously they didn't show.
Yeah, I thought, I remember the Ju, the July fourth was supposed to be the date and of course, July fourth is came and went and
Yeah.
still nothing, so yeah, that's, I think when city manager Shrupp gets back, we'll have to have her lay the fire under somebody.
Well, I think it's too for, like you mentioned, have we, have we paid for it already?
Yeah.
Well, we paid for this fence.
Right.
It just seems to me we've paid for it already, that's kinda.
I mean, we entered into an agreement, I believe, with them. I don't, I'm not sure if I've seen that or if that agreement stated any particular timeframe is.
Normally you hold a retainer, some kind of a retainer to make sure you can hold people accountable, so. I wouldn't be surprised if we paid for the, the entire job, but we'll have to get a clarification on that.
I would be surprised too if we paid upfront, so.
Any informational items, anything else anybody would like to bring? I'll just close with one little comment. There was a individual that was talking about, well, they were kinda, it was a request actually to have the mayor declare August a month of weeds for pulling weeds. And I'm not sure that that falls kind of in the realm of what the mayor can set a proclamation for.
Start on Sixth Street.
Yeah, what's going on with that?
Those boulevards, it's just atrocious.
They're terrible.
Then there'll be mows it.
Well, and I think.
But.
Wasn't that the contractor?
Kind of it's in a dead time right now and they normally you can't seed this time of year anyway because it doesn't grow. It's outside the limits and so, but I mean, somebody should be looking after it.
We did have a conversation with city manager Hill about that before he left and he did assure us that the contractors are gonna come back and do it, but we're in the middle of a drought and I, I get it.
But it's still, we still have a mowing or, and they're like a foot tall at least, some of them are over than that.
We're watering trees out there today, yeah.
Yeah.
It's ankle, I mean.
We, we mowed it once.
Yep, and you should mow again and then send them a bill.
Well, I mean, if nothing else, we should, you know, have, have sent it out to where, or somebody goes there and says, hey, you know, you have to at least mow it down, we're gonna get grass in there, it's like you can't just not take care of it until we get actual grass in it.
Right.
That, that needs, that's the part that needs to be addressed, cause you gotta mow it, you just can't wait till somebody, cause that was there, the, the contractors were going to reseed it, not mow it and take care of it that way, but.
I mean, is there any grass coming in with it at all?
There wasn't, didn't see any today on the road.
Uh, so they could just as well dust it with some spray and take it out, get it prepped for.
I think that's what they have to do.
I think you're right. You know, we could spray it and, who's, who's supposed to be taking care of that, is that Riley's?
But you know, I, I guess along with that, you know, we do have some city ordinance and it kinda falls into that mowing category, I think, you know, and we all have the responsibility to take care of our boulevards and our lawns and you know, I don't think we need the city government to declare a proclamation, declaring August weed month because next year we might have a wet August, so I just think people need to be responsible and do the right thing and take care of your stuff. All right, anything else to come before the council?
Along with that, talking about the boulevard, you know, the, a couple blocks on Sixth Street, somebody had put some furniture and clothes out there months ago. And I don't know if that needs to be addressed at some point, if, if you leave your stuff out there for, cause now it's all overgrown with it, you probably saw that, and it's been out there since May. I don't think anybody's gonna take anymore from the law.
There was something from the street back up in the boulevard today.
Yeah, it's been laying in the street and it, I mean, again, that's the homeowner's responsibility to remove that. So we may have to, cause we know we have that issue at move out every year where there's things that get left on boulevards for quite some time and it, you know, as people drive through your city, they drive down Sixth Street here and see kinda stuff in the boulevard and weeds and so I don't know if that's, you know, part of the, an ordinance too about maybe the city just picks it up and builds it back to the homeowner again.
Is there an assumption that if they put it on the boulevard, somebody's gonna take it away?
I think that the assumption is people are always, you know,
Looking for something.
dumpster diving, but there's no dumpster, so if they, cause the people, I know people went through that. I drive down that street a lot and it, it disappeared, but that was, like I said, that was in May or June that it's been there. And so, I mean, that's fine, but you can't just leave it there for months, cause like I said, I think people have picked it over enough that it's not going anywhere, plus it's been the two raids we've had.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, cause you know, it really speaks to, you know, we do have ordinances, several of them and it's really up to Sheriff Dingman and his crew how they wanna police that. And we, we, us people here, we can't really dictate that they do it, I mean, it's.
I, I'm not sure, that might be some question for them, you know, based off of the contract that we have with them.
I don't know if we really.
I think we might get some, that might be a good question for him for some clarification. And certain ordinances that will they, you know, enforce or not? Because they're city ordinances.
Well, I think that was one of the questions I had initially when we were looking at transferring over to the county is, you know, really, if we make, you know, that decision to turn it all over to them, then we really give up control of those types of things. And it's up to really him, I think, and their, their staff, how they wanna police that, cause I've had a couple conversations.
There's so city ordinances, it's not, it's still, whether whoever's police.
So when, but the, 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 the law enforcement doesn't go around and enforce mowing ordinances, that would be the city people that go around, see the lawns that are like that. So I think that the city people, if they see that on there, that's against the ordinance, send them a letter, clean it up. If it's not attended to by, obviously what we do with the mowing is we send them a letter, if they don't do it, then we go over and mow it.
Yeah.
And then we bill them. So we send it to them, I believe there's probably some protocol there, they don't clean it up, we go over there, clean it up, send them a bill for disposal.
Just like the snow removal, that's, you don't have the deputies running around.
Right, I think that's part of our staff that needs to do that.
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be a Russ thing then.
Yeah. Or whoever's in that position to be watching these things. And, you know, it's, I would say it's no different than your upkeep of your lawn or junk in your yard. I think it, I think it only is attention to the department or, or the police is after
Yep.
we get enough notice where it isn't getting done and either we show up and take care of it or serve them with whatever we need to do.
Yeah, and I can remember, I think there were some, there were certain circumstances where our guys, our, our police officers did knock on doors and, you know, handed somebody a, you know, hand delivered a, you know, a ticket for doing whatever, non-compliance and mowing lawns or whatever, but I just don't know where Jason and his group fit into all this anymore, but we'll start with our, you know, internally and see if we can't get it placed and go from there. You know, I, but I know back in the day, we used to do the cleanup, pick up, spruce up day and I think our, just, I'll probably get shot for even mentioning it, cause I don't think our city guys really were too crazy about going around and picking up all that stuff, cause it is a lot of work. And it is a, a big expense to the city, I understand that too, but I know other cities have a similar program and it seems to work, but it is a commitment from the city, you know, you have to, you know, throw some money at it and, you know, Elbe Lake has it and if you drove through Elbe Lake, it's pretty clean, there's just not a lot of junk laying around. So I mean, there is some merit in doing it and I just don't wanna put a lot of extra work on our, our city guys either, cause I know they're busy, but I did have a conversation with Troy about it and he, he could see it working, you know, at Dinger Bretons, you know, but you'd have to probably section off the town, you know, maybe do the west side, you know, one week and east side another, just break it down into small pieces and throw some sling loads out and see what happens, but, you know, it's something we may have to address as we go forward as our blighted properties, they seem like they're on the increase, I know, Brian, we've had conversations about that and I don't know really other, any other way we're gonna get a handle on it unless we maybe take some sort of action like that, but we'll have to see.
Well, I think it's also starts with, there's things in place right now to deal with it, so it just needs to be dealt with. And that would be the first steps, identifying the letters, they come from the city hall, they're.
So we, will you take the reins on that, Mary, and maybe talk with Rebecca and about maybe Sixth Street and maybe that, the, the mowing and that, that material that's there? And then I don't know who's, maybe she can define who or what department is.
Responsible for that.
Responsible, because I think it would be more of Russ's department, because they're around town all the time, so when you, if you notice something that's off, at least tell somebody or have, have Russ take a look at it so that they can get it to the appropriate people that can get the paperwork out and get it started. You know, so that they're notified or, and they can drop off the paperwork or send it to them or whatever, but I think it's important too, cause down that stretch, I, I, I really struggle with the fact that the homeowner doesn't believe that they should mow whatever's out in front of them there, I guess, I, I don't, I would. I don't, that would drive me crazy to have four foot weeds in front of my house, so I don't understand that.
It may just be that they were thinking somebody's gonna come up with grassy, I don't know, I mean, there may be just some miscommunication. We had that issue when we did Oregon too and it was confusion on who was supposed to take care of it and.
And maybe it's in our best interest to just have Russ's crew go there, mow it and spray the bou, boulevard dead with Roundup so that we're ready for these guys to, in the fall, it's, everything's dead and they can till it a little bit and get it seeded, because if it's green with a lot of weeds, that ain't gonna work real well in, in the fall. It's just, it's gonna be terrible.
Right, yeah, cause it'll have carryover and.
It'll just, it'll just. It'll be terrible, but if you do it now, when you kill it off, it'll, that stuff will all be done. Be easily worked up and seeded in.
Yeah, I'll have a conversation with Becca when she gets back.
Thank you, that would be great.
Good conversation. Anything else to come before the council? If not, meeting adjourned.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Thanks for coming in, Jay.